So I'll call a meeting to order at seven oh three and turn it over to our illustrious secretary.
Okay, roll call trustee Shaw.
Here.
Trustee Graziano.
Here.
Trustee Journey.
Here.
Trustee Zaudi is absent and trustee Hayes, trustee Freedom in present.
And they're both expected momentarily from the retreat.
So we do have a board.
Yes, we have a board. We can continue with the pledge.
Yes, I ask you to join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
All right. So we have a sham-packed agenda tonight. Are there any additions or corrections to it?
I do have an addition, just a request to add the approval of minutes from January twenty fourth, twenty twenty four meeting. Last month, these meeting minutes did not pass because we had absences and extensions.
And that's the January twenty what?
Twenty fourth, twenty twenty four.
Of twenty twenty four.
So it would make it a regular board meeting. I forgot. Make it three meeting minute approvals.
Yep. Thank you, Ali. All right. Any other additions or corrections to the agenda? Okay. The agenda is adopted then. Anyone from the public who wishes to address the board? Thank you, Eliza. No public physically present unless Bettina or was there you'd like to say anything before? Okay. Um, why don't we move to board meeting minutes? I like it, Matt. I do. Like Robocop.
Motion.
Um, so let's get down to the minutes and knock those out.
Sure.
We'll start with, we'll do A, B, C, C being January, so do them in whatever order you wish. Um, would anyone like to move to approve, uh, the minutes from February twentieth?
Welcome, Bill.
I'll move to approve the minutes from.
Thank you. That was our regular board meeting. Trustee Jardine, any seconds for the February twentieth? Meeting minutes.
Last regular.
Last month's regular.
Yes.
Thank you. All right, Jenny, um, all those in favor?
I.
You can roll for us.
No.
All of, any of those?
We typically do.
Do we typically do?
Yeah, we typically do.
Oh, and you typically do.
We typically do. Roll call for minutes.
Okay, great. Yeah, three of them coming up.
So, yeah, so February twentieth, so if you were not present. Abstain. Um, trustee Shaw.
I.
Trustee Graziano.
I.
Trustee Jardine.
I.
Trustee Zaudi.
I.
Trustee Hayes.
State.
Okay, and trustee Freedom in, I.
Okay, that takes us to item seven B, approval of the minutes from the library board retreat on February twenty fourth. And if you were not here, please abstain. I'll move to prove that I had the opportunity to read them yesterday. They were very good. Thank you. Would anyone like to second the board retreat minutes?
Also.
Thank you, Matt. Roll call.
Okay, trustee Shaw.
I.
Trustee Graziano.
I.
Trustee Jardine.
I.
Trustee Zaudi or trustee Hayes.
Abstain.
Trustee Freedom in, I.
I have it. Last but not least, the minutes from January twenty fourth of twenty twenty four, regular board meeting in January. I remember the discussion where we're like, can we approve it? We didn't have, we had a core, a physical forum, but we didn't have a forum of people who were present in January. So I will once again motion to approve these minutes from January twenty fourth, twenty twenty four.
Was I here? I moved to approve the minutes from February twenty.
Thank you, Sandy.
And this was the one that was twice rescheduled because of the furnace, just to recall everyone's memory.
Then I wasn't there. I can't motion. I can't.
No, you can't. He weren't there.
Bill or Matt?
I'll motion.
Thank you.
Trustee Journey, you still second that?
Yeah.
Great. All right, we'll do roll call vote. Uh, okay, trustees Shaw.
Abstain.
Okay, trustee Graziano.
Abstain.
Trustee Hayes.
Yes.
I just want to make sure I had you sent it. That's all right. It's the round. Trustees Zaudi.
You were there.
No, you were there.
And we reviewed the minutes last month too, so you're good.
So that was and trustee Freedom in, I.
Do you remember?
Okay.
Awesome. Great. Right, then we'll, um, shift gears to the audit report from fiscal year twenty twenty two, twenty three, twenty three, twenty one.
No, twenty two, twenty three.
Twenty two, twenty three. Twenty two, twenty three. Um, so welcome to Martha Trotter, Sickich and Bettina O'Connell from the Village Finance Director. Uh, many of you will remember Bettina has walked us through when we were only on Zoom, at least that's when I met you first. Um, so thank you both for being here in person.
Thank you. Um, so my name is Martha Trotter. I'm the partner of the library's audit engagement. And I'm briefly presenting the annual financial report for the fiscal year and the eight and all three of the twenty three, so that's thirty twenty three, fiscal year. So I'll just highlight some of the key items in the annual financial report, just to assist you in reviewing the financials by now to, you know, read through it. And any questions that anyone has, I can address once I live up. The independent auditors report that's come out through this one through three of the financial statements. This is often what is a look for when you're reading financial statements, so this is where we provide our opinion on the financial statements based on the audit procedures that we perform. In reference with generally accepted auditing standards, with generally accepted auditing standards. So I am pleased to be able to present a clean, unmodified opinion on the library's financial statements as presented here before you. That is the highest level of opinion that we can provide, and what that states is that the financial statements can be relied upon that based on our testing, our procedures performed, the information you've identified is reliable and meets our highest level of opinion. Uh, we, as I know that we conducted our audit in a group with generally accepted auditing standards, so I always like to comment on how much information you request is part of an audit and fixed on our appreciation for all the assistance that's provided to us, both from the library and the village as well, and providing all the information that's required in order to be able to provide that if we need to request a significant amount of information to test the balances that are presented here and to be able to report on those balances. So our most sincere appreciation for the professionalism that was provided to us and the timeliness of the information that was provided to us to be worthy to issue the report.
I will do better next year on the timeliness also.
It is, it's a lot of information that's requested, and especially with turnover, that's always understandable, so.
Generous, thank you.
No issues on our end, so had there been any issues that we faced during the audit in terms of disagreements with management or that would have been a direct, important part of the report issuance. Following the independent auditor's report, there's a section, uh, with the page numbers, uh, D and A one through, um, D and A five, this is the management discussion and analysis. And this is a great, uh, it's an executive summary of the financial statements and also provides some comparative information that's not found in the financial statements. So there's no other section of the financial statements that are, that you read that I would highly recommend reviewing the management discussion and analysis, and it provides a little bit more context to the balances themselves and explains some of the impacts of the variances and what drove those variances. That's not detailed within the financials itself. So the management discussion and analysis can bring brief section to give you a little bit more context to what's in the reported stuff. And then right behind that, following the management discussion and analysis, I'm the basic financial statements. Page four of the report, uh, page number four is the statement of net position and page number five, uh, right behind that is the state of activities. These basic financial statements are presented on a full basis of accounting, so this is unlike the monthly reporting that you're used to seeing. This incorporates the long-term asset, the long-term liabilities of the library. What that means is the capital assets, not an accumulated depreciation, given the long-term high dollar value item, as well as the, oh, the library's portion of the OPEB and IMR, net pension line buildings and the associated deferred out. Those are the timing items related to those, uh, balances that are calculated by actuarial auditions. So those flow into the, uh, full accrual basis financial statements. These are not what you're used to doing on a monthly basis. So this is, they are only reported on an annual basis in the financial report. Uh, on the statement of activities, which is on page five, you'll see that the library's net position increased over the previous fiscal year. Uh, an increase in net position of one hundred thirty thousand. That's an improvement in the library's net position, once again, on that full accrual basis of accounting, so that takes into account purchases of capital assets, the accumulated depreciation of those assets during the year, as well as the changes in those long-term liabilities. And then right behind that, you'll find, uh, on page six, the balance sheet of the library for the library's general fund. And on page eight, this is the statement of revenues, expenditures, and expenditures in fund balances, the income statement. These two statements are presented on a modified accrual basis of accounting, so this is more aligned with what you're used to doing on a monthly basis, when you review the budget first actual. Uh, so those long-term items are not included on in these balances. This is for the full fiscal year, so the balance sheet at April thirtieth, twenty twenty three, and the statement of revenues and expenditures, the fund balances in for a debt fiscal year on the date of twenty twenty three. Uh, one item to highlight here on page six, you'll find the library's total fund balance is, uh, unassigned. That means there's no restrictions on the fund balance. There's no, uh, non-spendable items or items that are not locally in nature. So the library's entire fund balance is available to be used to fund subsequent fiscal year operations. That four hundred ninety-four thousand, uh, of fund balance is roughly five months of the fiscal year, uh, with twenty twenty one expenditures, so the whole fund balance there. On page eight, you'll see revenues as compared to expenditures. There was an increase in the balance over the previous fiscal year, so an increase of seventy-three thousand, seven hundred forty, you know, improvement in the fund balance. And I'll skip over the footnotes to the financial statement to get to, uh, a little bit more detail on that. Where that, uh, financials too, so that it came to the fund balance. So if we flip to page one of those ones, six, and on the fourth, I'll be sure. So on page twenty seven, with the budget versus actual schedules of the library's general fund, uh, as you see, uh, this kind of helps you see how budgeted revenues as compared to, acting revenues as compared to budget, as well as actual expenditures of the fiscal year as compared to budgeted. So the library budgeted, um, for revenues and expenditures to be equal, however, uh, revenues significantly exceeded actual revenue significantly exceeded what was budgeted for by ninety-four thousand, so that was a significant increase in what was, uh, expected to be received and recognized as revenue during the fiscal year. Expenditures slightly over what was budgeted for, just, uh, right around twenty-one thousand over what was budgeted. Uh, however, the increase in revenues, uh, that resulted in that bump up of the fund balance of seventy-three thousand, and a large portion of that related to the donations that were collected during the year. So as you see, uh, there were ninety-two thousand dollars, so almost ninety-three thousand dollars of donations received, uh, as roughly during FY twenty-three, during fiscal year twenty twenty-three, so that was quite a significant piece of that.
Can I jump in there real quick?
Sure.
So, um, remember in fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, the completion of the strobering happened. And so that includes, I believe, a final payment from the foundation. Um, and so because the work would have started in the stroberoom in twenty-two, I believe, um, any donations that were received by the foundation for the stroberoom would have been accounted for here. And so I actually asked Martha, I told her one of the questions I had was, what are some of the the reasons for this very healthy fund balance as I was budgeting to spend exactly? And so I think looking at everything together, this is a really, um, effective an explanation for this, so thank you. I really appreciate it.
So you also see on the expenditure side, um, large, largely, uh, the use of donations is also where, uh, the expenditures exceeded what was budgeted for, and the kind of forays that revenue that was collected, as well as the expense of those donations.
Exactly. Thank you.
And as I said, the remaining schedules in the section of the report pages twenty-eight through, uh, thirty are the library's share of the other post-employment benefit plan and plan. These balances are calculated by the actuary and that we, uh, subsequently calculate the library's share based on employee usage and enrollment of these plans. So, uh, just one thing that you'll know in the other report that was issued, the board communication, we discussed the use of estimates in the financial statements. So these are based on actuarial inputs and assumptions. We are auditors, not actuaries, so we rely on that, the actuaries and their expertise, their experts in their field. Uh, so these numbers are derived directly from those actuarial populations. Uh, we do audit them, but do rely on the expertise of other, uh, individuals in their field.
So on the village side, we go up to the actuary on an annual basis to get our financial information, our whole information, and then I'm close. Their actuarial information through their own website with their actions, in case when we're all.
That's good.
Any questions, uh, about audit in general or?
I have a question, Martha. So in seeing how the year played out, um, what we saw was, um, I think this is right, correct me if I'm wrong, Renee. I think our employees accrue paid time off under you. I think. And then our budget is, has a fiscal year, you know, the municipal fiscal year. I saw some references in your reports about accrual for employee paid time off. And so it was just, it was a question that came up in finance, and I was like, hey, what, what has happened in the past, especially when we were with, working with an interim library director? People couldn't take time off because we were so shorthanded. And, um, you know, so they were taking more time off in the next calendar year, again, because Renee was hired January first, it was kind of for me, the focus was on calendar year, calendar year, one calendar year to the next. So can you just clarify and confirm for me that is there or isn't there an accrual for earned time off that hasn't been taken yet by the employees?
Sure, so the, uh, balances associated with comp, with what we call compensated absences, the vacation accruals, uh, or sick accruals that do get paid out, uh, if we get paid out at termination. Those are reflected in the basic financial statements, the full accrual basis of accounting, so only on the statement of disposition on statement of activities. So the, the general fund or the library fund, uh, done the monitoring reporting, those are long-term, considered long-term liabilities, so they are not accounted for on that modified accrual basis of accounting, however, they are reflected on the full accrual basis of accounting. Uh, page seventeen in the footnotes for the financial statements.
Mm-hmm.
Footnote five at the bottom refers to one from obligations, so the company's in an absence is lying.
Gotcha.
Shows to you what the balances were calculated at, uh, the beginning of the fiscal year at May first and the additions and retirements of those balances throughout the year, uh, resulting in, uh, the balances at April thirtieth. There was a, a slight change, uh, actually a slight decrease in those compensated absence of balances at April thirtieth as compared to the end of the previous fiscal year. So.
I think that's because of the, um, retirement. No, I was gonna say, I think with Eric's leaving.
Yes.
The payout is.
Yeah.
The payout, the payout of terminated employees balances reflects into those calculations, exactly.
And so this long-term balance, this long-term obligation balance, net of the amount that's due within the year is our, is our long-term liability on the balance sheet.
That along with the other post-employment benefit, the IMR liability, which are those actuarial balances. And those are just, those are the balances, uh, at April thirtieth, if all employees were terminated at that time, what would be required to be paid out? So that doesn't mean necessarily that those are the balances that will be paid out ultimately. Obviously, usage occurs and employees, um, take time and accrue balances and there's changes in employment, but, uh, that would be at the April thirtieth date, what would be paid out if all employees were to resign.
Well, and only certain, according to our policy, only certain leave types are paid out. Sick leave is not paid out. It accrues if you stay in the position up until your time of retirement. You could use a length of your sick time towards early retirement through IMRF schools since sometimes have a similar process. Um, but we don't pay sick leave. Um, the only thing that we pay out when someone leaves a position, um, or they're terminated is vacation and personal. We don't pay bereavement. We don't pay, um, because holiday is, is incorporated into, um, the flex, which is the vacation umbrella. Um, so it's really only those two.
So that, exactly, that's the, the balances that are eligible to be paid out.
Thank you.
Was there anything, I, this is so helpful. We had a really great board retreat last month where we talked all about our finances and, um, the timing of this while desperately late in the year, um, I think really helps because we had that training in a way for the whole trustees to understand a lot more of the finances. So, um, thank you for sharing this scrap too. I don't know if you just put this together today, but thank you. Um, this is really helpful to see. One of the reasons Bettina and I asked, or I asked Bettina what, um, Sickich's role has been at these board meetings is at previous libraries, I usually, um, have seen the auditors come and present and, you know, be available for questions and, um, you know, I thought with the transition of me into being a director and just the general questions about our finances, I thought this was um, a good thing to, to invite our auditors with Bettina, um, because both of them have done so much great work, so thank you both.
Any other questions?
Was there anything else from the village, John? I mean, I think it's all here.
Yeah.
It's all here. And they all received the audit as soon as it was available. It was emailed out to everybody, so this is really just a refresh. Um, but also a time to ask any questions if we want.
Sure. Gold star on the audit. I'll take it. Thank you. There's no other questions? Then we have an action item to vote to approve the final audit for fiscal year twenty-three as presented this evening. Anyone like to motion?
I'll motion to approve. So here's only three of those.
Thank you, Matt. Second?
I'll second.
Roll call votes.
Trustee Shaw.
I.
Trustee Graziano.
I.
Trustee Jardine.
I.
Trustees Audi or trustee Hayes.
I.
The trustee Freedom in.
I.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you.
With Bettina here, I have one addendum, if I may. Um, she, I am passing around, um, a packet to keep passing around in a circle. Sorry, um. It wasn't anything that related to the board packet, but it's a handout that I wanted to make available, um, for Bettina. As you know, you voted to approve the budget at last month's, um, board meeting. Um, and so those budget documents were sent to Bettina. One of the, um, the pieces of work that I worked with on the finance committee, specifically Bill, was to look at the documents themselves and balance what we were discussing as the funds from eighty-two and incorporate them into the spreadsheet so that you can see both, um, all of the revenue and expenditures from our general fund, but also bring in the funding um, that we receive from our grants. For example, we're getting a lot of grants in this next fiscal year. And so that offset, um, a lot of our increased costs for next year because of the increased salaries. And so when I sent this information to Bettina, I don't know, is this the handoff now? Do you want to talk about it?
Sure.
So, um, when I got the information, I then take and extract of the data and import it into my own large budget workbook that becomes a belligerent budget, actually, parts of the pages. And realized that the donation, um, fund eighty-two and the general fund eighty both reflected the grant numbers in using expenses. Exactly the same numbers. And so that brought me to a conversation with Renee to find out if that was the intent, if there really is a duplicative donation that you're dividing between the two funds, or if it really is just the one amount. Because historically, the, um, donation has set the grant fund along with the expenditures. So, um, we then determined that it should just stay in fund eighty-two, the one amount, two sixty-four and some change, um, and not in the general fund. So what I did, historically, there hasn't been a cover sheet that summarizes both these funds, which is the front page of us, which kind of now mirrors the audit a little bit better. It'll give you, um, the summary of those two funds together, which is how the file presents. So you'll see, um, revenues from eighty to eighty-two, operating from eighty, which is where all the operating expenditures happen, and then capital on eighty to eighty-two, and the grant, there is a grant line in the general fund. Sometimes there's been a random thousand dollar depiction.
But we're not gonna use it.
Right, so it's zero out right now.
Yeah.
But you could, if somebody made a donation and came in and said, here, I want to donate, you know, five hundred dollars, that'd be a general fund, then a donation, what they do, that's been that.
Our typical process is that it goes into eighty-two.
Right, but like I said, if there was some off, you know, donation, you could put it, so I left it. And then, um, showed you the beginning and end of your fund balances, which are pretty close to the audit, because this doesn't include any rules or any changes like that, but they're within one to three thousand hours of where you'd done it. So it's a good estimator kind of temperature where, um, the revenues expenses would look like based on, you know, where.
So.
So I'll include this sheet going forward, these are just data notes from data that I, you know, have.
And what it achieves is what we were trying to do anyway, which was show to the public that we have a variety of revenue coming in. It's both in the eighty general fund and in the donations of grants. And so when we look at our overall, um, expenditures, our budgets, the number is the same that we approved last month.
Go ahead.
So especially for Bill, I wanted to provide this explanation because we were, and I apologize to Bettina, I should have brought you in earlier in the process to understand on your end. But I think this achieves what everybody needs, um, and is a really, um, accurate reflection of all of our revenue, um, that funds various things for the library. So thank you, Bettina, for putting this together.
Yeah, I think the other thing it also does is, um, it provides a summary where we can point to and say where, where the revenues, like the, the I was concerned because we are pursuing so many more grants that it was gonna look like if everything was just totaled up together, that we somehow magically created a huge increase, you know, in, in our year-to-year budget, so.
Although it's a summary, it does present categories that appear more transparent than I just went wrong.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, you know, really the difference between the, um, where is it? You know, it says a hundred and nineteen point eight percent, the increasing brand outlay. So anyway, um, thank you for that. I like it for that reason as well.
I think it's a great improvement and just another example, I think, of our well, me learning from Bettina, but also our collaboration to understand what each of us needs to do, and this is what's gonna be included in the budget report and approval for the village. So it also succeeds in doing another thing that the finance committee and I wanted to talk about, which was, um, kind of streamline, um, the visibility of our budget. kind of streamline the visibility of our budget to the public. We still have all of the individual funds listed like we've done before and like the village does. But the first summary provides a really nice snapshot. And is a little bit more of a bite-sized way to access it. So thank you. That was the addendum. So thank you. Thank you, Martha, for staying. Thank you very much for being here.
Great. That takes us to the library directors' report.
Just, I'll email this to everybody so you have a copy and then I'll also include it in next month's board packet, just to make sure. Thank you again. Just to make sure that we have public visibility of this document. I just got it a couple of days ago, so. Thank you all. Okay. Shifting gears. Director's report. So I think one of the best highlights of last month was the board retreat. Missed your bill, but we know you celebrated your family very well. So I just want to share another thanks to all of you for giving up a Saturday morning to dig into some not some light, easy topics. We were really working. And I shared a recording of the
I did. I went through, everything seemed to be going well. When you guys got into groups, then there was a lot of conversations, it was happening at once that Mike was picking up different areas.
Got it. Okay. And I can follow up with you on some summaries of that. But I just want to say, I think it was a huge success. Janie Dirch, who is not here tonight, asked me as we were leaving. What could we have another one? I mean, I'm not gonna take up another Saturday anytime soon, but I am certainly open to suggestions. And I think what I have is an updated graph. Do you remember at the end of the retreat, Jamie Ractlin said he would put together a spreadsheet with all of the financial options, a description of each one, timing for when they would happen. I just received it today and I didn't want to overwhelm you all with more things because you already have so many things. But I'm gonna follow up with sending that. I think it's a great tool for the board to use going forward. And the retreat summary is gonna go live on the library website and on social communications on Monday of next week. So stay tuned for that. Thank you all for contributing your comments. And Bill, I'll send you a copy so you can review it ahead of time and see. I feel a little bit like we're at a place where we were last fall in terms of staffing. We have a full-timer who is a different full-timer for a different reason, entirely protected under ADA on emergency leave through the end of April. They started it at the beginning of February. And so that has obviously impacted projects and impacted capacity. At the same time, our part-time cataloging librarian has had to dip into their leave, speaking of leave. What we were just discussing due to a family emergency. And it's unclear when this person will return and at the manner of their return. And so as we've discussed a couple of times, you know, there's a there's a need to support the staff who have the leave when they need to take it. And also the burdens that that places upon the organization. I'm pleased to tell you, we never had to close the library once in February due to any of these staffing issues. I also think that is a large part to the pilot. That's not to say there haven't been struggles. And when we talk about the pilot, the report that I'm presenting tonight for month two, you'll see more of that. But I do want to let you know that that change in staffing began in February. There were a variety of grants that were applied for in February. I know I've shared a few, I've shared information with the board, but I just want to acknowledge publicly trustee Ally Friedman, who has been taking an incredible role in supporting the process. As I told her, grant writing and applying is usually library administration director work and it's much more operational than it is trustee work. In fact, it's really not trustee work, but it's a way that I think she's been able to share her talents and support. So we applied for a significant grant for remodeling for accessibility. And I applied for another grant for community engagement and we have a third grant that's coming up through T-Mobile. We're applying for at the end of this month. That would potentially provide us fifty thousand dollars for all new computers to transition from cassette tape backup for our data to cloud-based server data, which we don't have. Yeah, it's amazing. When I told Ally that, she had a similar face. And so I'm really dedicated to trying to get as many funding opportunities for us as possible. And Ally's support has been great. So thank you. Passport applications process has gone up slightly in February. Martha was able to add two hours this month. A slow and steady add is really the strategy we employed this month. And we continue to see no requests. For those that are interested in collections and data analysis, you will love reading this report under collections. Our staff have done an incredible job in the last several months. I think taking some of the direction that I've given them to analyze their budgets, the circulation data and our space considerations to really reevaluate what collections we offer, both physical collections and our digital. And just like last month, we continue to see huge increases in our digital collection usage. And I'm actually going to be presenting to the finance committee, not this month, but next month, an article about ways that we can look at the use of our collection or digital collection and how much of our print collection or physical collection is budgeted versus our digital. A lot of libraries have a much more balanced print versus digital budgeting. We are very, very still heavily budgeted on print. And so, you know, we want to start kind of looking at that balance a little more to be more responsive to the the needs and the use of the community. While also not decimating our physical collections, of course, we want to really balance that. And we can only do that with really great data and the staff that are willing to do that. I think you know, Eliza's here in the room with us today. She has been working with her staff expertly to evaluate circulation numbers and peaks and valleys of circulation and sizes of collection. And you may have stopped by the youth services department and noticed some of the fruits of the weeding that have been taking place because you know, we have a limited size of our space and the statistics show that if a shelf is not as packed, people are more likely to look at the books and actually check them out. So it really helps with circulation. Weeding is just a part of the process. So thank you, Eliza, for all that you do. I'm going to keep going in sharing more information about this month, just in lieu of time. I want to make sure there's enough time for discussion. We have really been happy to see Anna, our full-time adult services librarian, expand back her responsibilities. You'll see her names in my director's report a lot this month. And I'm just really pleased to see her changing responsibilities, but also getting back to former responsibilities such as programming and collections. In fact, in evaluating Katie Horner's responsibilities as a manager, we've actually offloaded some more significant responsibilities from her and delegated them to others' tasks, to other staff when appropriate and when it fits within their job description, including collection development and overseeing some updates to our reading lists online. And so streamlining workflow, you know, trying to get a lot of the work that our, our front desk staff can do to them. So they have great projects to work on while there are slow times at the desk and offloading from our managers who have increased responsibilities and checking in with staff, training, staff development, and some of the more project-based work that they're doing. So more really excellent changes. I wanted to mention something about our telephone vendor, Granite. This is under technology. Because I remember this had come up at a previous finance and technology committee meeting. We were, our contract had ended with our current telephone vendor in November of two thousand twenty-three. At the time, we knew Martha and I that we were going to solicit RFPs for another new vendor for our telephone. We had really bad experience with Granite dropping calls. Maybe some of you remember a couple of years ago. I don't remember quite when this happened. Maybe you do, Eliza, but the library didn't have phone service for several days. If that's recalling anybody's memory. And Granite was not able to respond with actually fulfilling and giving us our phone service back for multiple days beyond what they said in our contract. They weren't able to fulfill our contracts. Unfortunately, though, due to staffing, Martha hasn't been able to, and we haven't been able to move that project forward. So we signed on for another year. And we're going to look at an opportunity to rethink the contract at a later date. That is, as much as I'd like to highlight in my written report, in terms of the statistics that you have in front of you, there's just, there's just one statistic that I is erroneous that I wanted to highlight. It's both in the yearly graphs as well as the three-year graph. Our visitor count and our page view count for our website, that data is incorrect due to broken connection between Google Analytics and our LibCal, our data where Google Analytics and LibCal are supposed to connect and talk to each other this month. By the time I was running this report, Martha was already out. I wasn't able to find the solution in time for this report. So this will be corrected for next month. But it's really, I'm not anticipating much of a drop at all. The, the big drop for visitors and pay views is just because of that broken link. So. I'd be happy to answer any questions about the director's report of this night.
See, the timing on the grants, then, when you, when you
Yeah. Everyone's different.
Yeah, is it months away?
So remodeling for accessibility, the big grant for fifty thousand that we applied for with the state library. I know that we're still on the running because they reached out to me about a couple of weeks after I submitted the application for additional information. If we weren't, they wouldn't have asked. So that's a good sign, but there's not anything on their website. And when I've asked, they didn't have an update to share with me about when we would know.
Is it fifty thousand or nothing, or is it some portion between zero and fifty?
It's actually, now when you say fifty, it's actually forty-five. I'm sorry, I should have corrected myself. But in terms of their willingness to fund, I don't know if they would consider a lesser amount. The application talks about ninety thousand dollars worth of projects. But the funding is to match half of that. So we would be matching forty-five thousand. One of the grants through Rails for Community Engagement and Strategic Planning, that's five thousand. I'm supposed to hear, they said April, so anytime now. And then this T-Mobile grant, do you remember?
Mid-May, by mid-May. Yeah. So that's a little faster. There's six weeks.
Well, it's pretty quick.
Yeah. Oh, but never quick, never quick enough for all of us. We want to know if the money's coming in. I totally get that. And I'm still exploring grant options. So if you happen to see anything, local, state, national, I'm open to looking at it. And I think there's one that I sent recently to Ally, another one, but I haven't looked at your response yet. I think you just sent it today or yesterday.
I don't even know if I responded to that. We had two.
Oh, yeah. So we're looking, we're looking for that money that we're trying to get. Thanks, Bill. Yeah.
Thank you.
Sure.
So I have a request. And I'd be curious with the rest of the board. Thanks. So in the director's report, could we get a separate category for grants?
Sure.
Maybe it's right after administrative.
I can add finance section and kind of bring all the financial stuff together. If that would be helpful, like a budget and finance section, or I'll just have grants.
Whatever you think would be in finance other than grants.
Well, I'm thinking about this one, the library's policy, financial and other information webpage was updated. Anything where there's money attached to it. So for example, you know, we, Laurence and Martha did a lot of work on evaluating the magazine collection, the print magazine collection. And not surprisingly, a lot of our print magazines are not circulating. And so they identified over thirteen hundred dollars worth of savings for next year. That's not nothing. I recognize that. I mean, every month's gonna be different. So if you'd like, I could do whatever the board would like to recommend to me.
I like the idea of grants, but well, especially now you've got, you've got three going.
And I could provide updates about each one, if that's kind of what you're thinking.
Yeah, that'd be great. I'm also good with just grants because I feel like we do a thorough review of finances when we do checks and we do the monthly
Got it. Sure. I'll do that. Thank you. Great suggestion.
Two. Now, I just want, I was like, you know, there was none. But there's the building resilient infrastructure community.
That was the national.
Yes. And then there's, which is through FEMA. Yes. And then there's the grant through Brad, that Brad Snyder's email.
That one I just sent.
That was just yesterday. Yeah. I haven't looked into that yet.
Of course.
Yes, there are two other.
And then, of course, when we're ready to apply for the library's public library construction grant, remember that's the one that has been recommended to my predecessor. And we were just waiting to apply for that. Because we didn't know what project we had. But that's sitting there and that's an annual grant that libraries get towards their building projects all of the time. So.
How much is that?
It's dependent on your project. It could be upwards to either two hundred and fifty. I mean, like, I think it really is pretty flexible.
Okay.
I did, does it also have a criteria by which?
Matching.
Yeah, I think the amount of matching varies depend, depending upon some statistic. I don't think it's EAV, but it's something.
Yeah, each grant eligibility and requirements are different. So, I mean, the village was willing to put up about five thousand dollars for matching for the concrete sidewalk updates for the remodeling for accessibility grant. Which is more concrete slabs than Jeff Hanson from the village or from the public work says that they would probably normally do for us. So that was a really great history saw our report and saw that we had a lot to remediate. So, yeah, thank you.
All right. Any other comments, questions from the director's report? Okay, so none. That takes us to committee reports. First up, bylaws and policy.
Great. We met two weeks ago and we revised the governance and organizational structure policy to reflect the new hours. And a few, like, remoting a few things that were incorrect. But the most material changes were the new hours and the combination of the finance and technology committee into one. This revision is being presented tonight for the board's review and approval. We also reviewed a sample compensation policy from the HR source report that could be added to section four of the library's personnel policy. And Renee will be bringing that revision back to the committee this next month.
This is correct.
And then we also had a review of a gift ban policy or adjustments to the existing gift policy to clarify that employees at the library cannot accept gifts in return for service and they will provide in their capacity as a library employee. So we are going to revisit that.
I'm gonna share some examples and we'll just do some more research there.
Thanks, Ally. Building in grounds. Sandy, would you like to provide a summary?
I, I remember talking about Endur Anderson. And we kind of agreed that they would be the best person to quickly pull together a facilities master plan. What else did we talk about? We talked about air quality testing report yet to be received. Received. We talked
We talked about water quality testing report yet to be received.
Uh, the air quality test report is ready after they receive the check that you are going to be approving tonight. So it is ready to be sent once they receive, and I have a check dispersment report for us to use because I noticed it wasn't accurate in the board report. So.
We talked about, um, a maintenance person.
I did talk about this in generalities, um, for those of you that have seen my self-reflection. It continues to be a need for the library. Um, and so I, I remember Bonnie, we were talking about just the initial conversations we have had, what some of responsibilities that they would be doing. I, um, I would have had and will have for next month's Finance Committee, um, numbers for you all to review, um, about pricing for eighteen hour a week versus twenty, twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-six, um, based on iron raft, no iron raft and potential implications financially for the library. Um, but I reviewed a list of job responsibilities and talked about the areas with which it could support the organization.
Um, so the big action item coming out of the Building and Grounds Committee is really the, um, vote on the Enberg Anderson report, but in full transparency, that report wasn't available because Sean was on vacation. So that's why the Building and Grounds Committee were like, we really did talked about Enberg Anderson or would it be somebody else? And we felt Enberg Anderson was the right one. Um, and also why, like the little nudge from me on Thursday or Friday last week to say, you know, please be ready to discuss this and, and take a vote on it. So. That's it. Um, HR Committee.
Um, HR Committee, we are working on the annual review. Thank you so much to everyone that participated. We had full participation from the board, um, and most of the managers were able to participate as well.
Um, one is on leave, as I mentioned, so.
Yes. Um, and then we had fourteen of the staff that were able to contribute to the, um, the questionnaire that we distributed. So that was really wonderful to have everyone participate, or as many people as was possible. Um, and we have met to look over the data, our committee did, and then we're meeting again this Friday, Bonnie and I, to finalize the report, which will be distributed to the board members. And Renee, um, and then I think you have a calendar of our upcoming dates because then we'll be meeting to discuss, um, with finance as well.
At the end of April.
Yeah.
Yep. Great. Thanks, Jenny.
Thank you.
All right, long-range planning. So we met post the retreat. And, um, we decided that, you know, the timeline the committee had originally outlined would work best with balancing workload for Renee between Enberg Anderson building numbers, uh, Jamie Rackland financial approach to then weave that into the long-range plan. So, um, the long-range plan will probably start going out for RFP to get some support for writing it uh, in the July-August timeframe, I believe. Um, and with some community engagement activities in the fall, right? Um, so a delivery of a long-range plan at the end of the calendar year. We are currently between years of the long-range plan. Questions? Yeah, because we really want that to reflect kind of a, again, state of the building as defined by Enberg Anderson with numbers as well as, um, kind of the, the vision, the path toward financial, our financial future, say that. Um, all right, Engagement Committee.
Okay.
Is your, she's ready.
We met on Friday and we talked about, started with, um, the onboarding process talking. We have put together a checklist, we, and, um, a packet.
For trustees.
Were for trustees. So we'll probably actually, um, at some point before too long, have people just push it out to people so that we can give them. Yes, what we need, we're going to have a work meeting next time that we're, we're just going to go through, um, fine-tune some more because we need to insert links and you know, put, put like things together and decide, you know, see what needs to be done at certain times. Like certain things need to be done annually, certain things need to be done right away. So we're, um, we're fine-tuning all of that. And then, um, we talked, we're, we're working on the message that we give when we go out and start really talking to people, um, so like a cohesive message for all of us. Um, so, um, I'm going to go out in, in next month and talk to the Lions Club.
Yeah.
And, um, so I want to start knowing me. I want to make sure I get the message solidified so that it, you know, so that I can give a cohesive message, which, you know, you can fine-tune and then we can all use one and talk to groups.
And we're going to meet.
We're going to be.
Yeah, we'll work together for that. I appreciate Sandy putting herself out there and just.
It's a start.
Yeah, absolutely. I do also want to say this is yet another example of where trustees really don't typically do this work. Like trustee onboarding is almost like the number one responsibility of the director, but I do say, and you all know this, I think that, um, I, when I walked into the role, there just wasn't really a lot for that new trustee experience. So each of you were new trustees or are continue to be new trustees, so your input will be extremely valuable. Um, so the checklist you're creating and, and the introductory letter that you're writing, it's a huge help. So thank you.
Thanks, Andy. Special Topics Committee. So the Special Topics Committee met, um, as we had a close-out meeting on the October twenty-twenty-two computer use violation incident in the library. Um.
What's been passed around is the report that didn't make it into.
So the final report was approved by the committee. The committee included myself, Janie, um, Matt helped with some computer, um, policy comparisons to other libraries and a, um, community member named Claire Abrahamsen.
Okay.
Um, so this is the final report, and this committee hopes to not be convened anytime soon. We do not have an action to approve this tonight because it was approved by the committee.
Although if the board, so if what they would like, I could put it on the agenda for next month with the inclusion officially in the board packet, um, if the full board would like to accept this as the committee would finally. I want to thank, um, our President Bonnie Schall, who did a really great job putting this report together, um, using drafts from Kathy Meyerhoff, um, and input from, thank you, Bonnie.
I'm happy to have it. So do you guys want to, so this, this will be posted, this report will be posted under the committee meeting with the meeting agenda, the meeting minutes, and this report, um. Suppose we need to find a way to approve the committee meeting minutes.
Which you could do in a board meeting.
Yeah.
But it would just be the people that.
Meeting. Who are on the committee, approve the meeting minutes.
And then the question would be is if you want this as an action item to approve this report.
What do you guys think? You're, I'm, I'm, I'm flattered how you're all reading it. Thank you. Thank you. It was quite the labor pulling it all together.
Um, I have a question about date. So.
We have like a twenty-three, twenty-four.
Yeah, I think so. So January third, twenty-twenty-four start date for new library orders. I just think that needs to get shifted back to twenty-four.
Yeah, it's one take this month to review the report and edits.
All that's twenty-three. No, I've heard twenty-four isn't even here yet.
Let's hope there's one of these.
Change from power.
It was Claire's name.
All right, thank you, Ally.
Make the sources and bring it to the.
So do you guys want to vote as a board to approve this report? Okay, you put it on the agenda for next month. Ooh, that was a lot of committee meetings. Busy month.
Thank you all.
Yeah. That brings us to February twenty-twenty-four financial reports. That's rock. Let's go.
We are nearing the end of the fiscal year. Spending is happening. Staff have regular reminders and, and dates. This is the check dispersment. Um, staff have deadlines for when their ordering needs to stop, um, to make sure that we receive, um, everything that we ordered before the end of the fiscal year, so it can be charged to the proper year. Um, ninety-nine point two four property taxes, pretty strong. Um, we continue to see an incredible amount of interest received from the library. Um, I believe you were saying to me, you wouldn't be surprised if we got to like forty thousand this year. Um, we still have some more work to do with that interest, but, um, we are, you're really sitting pretty with our amount of interest. Oh, we've already hit forty-one. We hit it. You are totally right.
Yeah, no, I had looked at just the last couple of months of what we were earning month by month. Um, but, uh, yeah, let's keep going.
No surprises under revenue, um, in terms of expenditures. Like I said, um, everything that is overspent, I know about it. Everything that's underspent, I know about it too. I've had meetings with staff, um, about their underspending and have made accommodations for that. Um, given the overspending of building and grounds, it is, is actually a welcome thing to have some budget lines underspent, but we're also having conversations about, is this underspending because of this year only, or is this a trend of underspending for many years so that maybe we need to adjust this budget line to make some room for others? Um, so those conversations are fruitful. Um, if you go back a month and look at our budget, you'll see a lot of red in this section. Um, we've made a lot of cuts based on, um, uh, needs, and I think that's really a positive thing.
Um, Renee, quick comment on, question really on, um, expenditures, salaries.
Yes.
Did we have someone move from staff salary to librarian salary?
Yes.
And the money didn't move, but the out, the payments have moved?
So yes, um, one of the positions of the community engagement and, um, communications manager was identified in Palacity and also in, um, BSNA as a staff and not a manager. Um, and so I have changed some names for these, um, budget lines next year, um, to have um, adjustments made also for that move. So, um, the budget for librarians encompasses the managers. It's also, I was talking to staff manager specifically, asking why do we have these categories? Does anyone know what these mean? No one knows why these are arbitrarily this way. Um.
Because there are librarians in staff.
Yes, and also I would say that from a public standpoint, everyone who works at the library is a librarian. Um, and some of our managers don't have an MLS degree, so I mean, how delineated are these budgets really? Um, I don't know the reason for that. I might be inclined in the future to just have one pot, to just have salaries, um, but I'm open to that future improvement of the budgeting, um, going forward. Good question.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, the other thing I would just point out is we're starting to see the gap that we expected to see in budgeted salaries and actual salaries paid.
Mm-hmm.
Don't know why we won't see it now, but it's good to see it.
Any other questions?
Happy to answer. All right. Are there any other questions on our monthly revenues expenditures? Hearing none. Looking for a motion to approve or report.
Motion to approve the February, uh, six, nine, which is four.
Thank you, Matt. Sir, second. That was Sandy. Thank you. And roll call.
Hey, Trustee Shaw.
Hi, Trustee Rattan.
Hi, Trustee Journey.
Hi, Trustee Dandy.
Hi.
Trustee.
Freedom and I.
Um, motion carries.
Thank you. I had a lot of trouble with Adobe and the website. There were a variety of technology issues that happened this week for me with the packet. One of them was that the full check dispersment report, the full check dispersment report didn't get included in the board packet. So that's why.
Seriously.
I know, right? Um, and I know for the two of you that signed them, it's not true. Um, so I want to make sure you have it in front of you. Thank you, Eliza, for co-lating tonight for this. Um, you will continue to see Ansel Flink, who is our law firm. Thank you to Bonnie for helping purchase, um, food and drink for the retreat. So that is why Bonnie signed her own check this month.
Dude.
Um, Enberg Anderson charged us a nominal fee for their last presentation. Um, technically only two were, one or two were included in their proposal. They ended up making three for us, and I said, please, just charge us for what we actually need. I think that was very generous. Um, Granite is our phone company. Great America Financial is the accounting company for impact for our copier. So you'll see copier maintenance for our lease. The vendor that we pay for our copier is Great America. And then the overage, remember when we got our new copier and they were like, well, how are you going to charge? Well, we were asking, how are they going to charge us for overage beyond our allotment of black and white and color? So we're starting to see some numbers, and so that nineteen dollars and fifty cents is the overage for the month. Um, so I, I, it's a lower number. I, I'll start tracking that, um, uh, based on usage. I have a feeling it's going to vary month to month with some regularity, with some irregularity. We'll have to see what happens. Marisim Advisors is Jamie Racklin. That was his charge for the retreat and the, um, the work and prep for the retreat. Priority Energy is the second part of the indoor air quality, um, report that you will be considering for the check dispersment report to note.
Hey, thanks, Renee. So looking for a motion to approve the checks from one five nine three to one five nine six nine.
Motion to, is one, is it one five nine four one?
I'm looking at this, but when I looked at the actual checks, they were, I wrote it, that's, I look at the checks when I write the agenda. Um, let's amend the agenda, um, because also that can't be right. That's only three. Yeah, it's only six numbers. I, I'm mistaken. I made a mistake. So thank you, Matt, for catching that. One five nine four, one, two, one, five, nine, six, nine.
So the end number is right.
Yeah.
Right.
So motion to approve checks one five nine four one, including checks one five nine six nine.
Eagle eye, Matt. Thank you. Second?
Last second.
Thank you, Bill. Roll call.
Trustee Shaw.
I.
Trustee Rattan.
Hi, Trustee Journey. I'm Trustee Dally or Trustee Hades.
Hi.
Trustee Freedom and I.
Here is how that. New business.
I want to present this proposal briefly and make time for you all to discuss. So backtracking to the board retreat, the, the decision of the board at that time was we need to find out what the number is for the updates to the building before we determine what financial direction we're going to take in essentially raising funds for said project. We don't know what the project entails. And so I met with Sean Kelly from Enberg Anderson for about an hour where we. And so I met with Sean Kelly from Engberg Anderson for about an hour where we discussed what that process would be. That process would be called a master plan process. And Engberg Anderson is one of the several organizational architectural firms that do this for libraries. What you have in front of you, I'm just going to walk through in a very high level. The first section is is the project understanding has the discussion of the three tiers. Tier one, I was talking to Jenny about this. Tier one would be just updating the non-negotiables. The compliant issues, planning for HVAC replacements, addressing some of the major, you know, updates to the electrical and so forth. And that would also include incorporating planning for the roof, masonry, tuck pointing. You know, again, these are non-negotiables that have to be in a master plan. And then technology would be incorporated in that. So everything you see under tier one, tier two, tier three, it's not encompassing of everything, and especially tier two. These are examples. That's what I was going to say with tier two. Based on the work they've already done, they are proposing some examples of what tier two could be. But ultimately, tier two is scoped based on the engagement process that would take place with you, with staff, with the community. And then together, there would be discussion and determination of what those tier two priorities would be. And then tier three would potentially incorporate everything, obviously, from tier one and tier two. Tier two would also incorporate tier one. And tier three could be more expansive. But again, all the process of developing a master plan, this, that's what this proposal is for. The deliverable would be that long-term plan for the library to incorporate updating its facilities, but the board, the staff, the community engagement, all of that feeds into this process. And so the methodology, they estimate approximately one hundred and fifty days. I said that would probably be a good estimate because that would align with our strategic plan process. And so the community engagement required for this would perfectly align with the natural focus groups and surveys that we would be doing with the community anyway. So it would have an opportunity to align processes together. And so, you know, again, with part one where it talks about programming, I would use the word, I wouldn't use the word programming in the sense of like story time or you know, a team book club, but the idea of what you want to do with your space, like what are the activities? And what is it that you're trying to do? And obviously, we need to identify twenty years, not just ten. That is really the goal of what I heard and what you all discussed at the board meeting. So this is more about the process than the actual details of exactly all of the the numbers and the method and the details of it. So if this was approved, we would fine tune this. There would be many planning meetings of which you would be involved in. We would talk about how this work is scoped by committee. We would talk about when the trustee session would be. Maybe it would be another retreat. You know, that would be maybe a natural thing. More assessments are included in this process, but what Sean said to me and what he kind of talked about in here is a lot of this work is done, but it's not to the full extent that we need for a master plan. Not only do we need numbers for all of the accessibility incompliances that we identified, because we don't have those numbers. We need engagement to really i- identify what the priorities of the board and the community are. So I just would say, you know, he's included a lot of examples, none of which this library has to or even will adopt. These are pictures to help you understand what the process are going to be. He did include our own rendering on page six of the proposal, and this was something that was developed. And I know probably will come up in discussion today how you all got to the point of deciding for this remodel. I think that the circumstances surrounding this rendering and this building planning are very different from now, and that can be a conversation that you all discuss. And then, you know, what's the price tag? At the end, on page eight, I highlighted in yellow. At the end of the day, it would be eighteen thousand five hundred, not to exceed. So it meets within the RFP limit. We can, the board can decide on their own. You don't have to get quotes from multiple architects for this. And I think some of the feedback that's going to come up tonight in discussion is why Engberg Anderson, wha- what are, what's the value of having them do this process as opposed to starting brand new with someone else? So with that, I'm going to defer to you to share more.
I'm actually going to ask you to share the comments from our Building and Grounds Chair.
Thank you for reminding me. I asked you to.
Yes.
I forgot. So similarly, when we did the P P R T discussion and decision, Bill, our treasurer, was not here, and so Bill drafted some words to guide the conversation. And so in the same way, our Building and Grounds Chair is not here enjoying her grandchildren's Hawaii. And so she was very kind to draft this, and I want to read on behalf of Janie Church, our Building and Grounds Chair and our vice president. Renee, I wholeheartedly support this plan, and I think it will be money well spent. For so long, we've been like the little Dutch boy sticking fingers in holes in the dykes. None of us on board or the staff have the time or expertise to do a thorough evaluation and create a viable plan. The plan portion, if the deliverables will be crucial, would, they will be crucial to our campaign, whatever form that campaign campaign will take to present to our public.
Other, other questions. This is our, you know, opportunity to discuss.
So if they brought in somebody besides April, April Anderson, would that like up the cost and then they'd have to like reinvest another wheel?
Or? I suspect it would because we would have to pay them to read through all of the reports that Engberg Anderson has created, and they've created more than what you've seen in the last ten months. You know, Renee pointed out the the rendering that's on that page. That was from two, maybe three. I think it might have been from twenty nineteen. I think it precedes me and Matt. And maybe even Bill. So the knowledge that they have of this building, having just done the showroom renovation is pretty substantial. So my, my belief is yes. I think it would be more expensive to go elsewhere. I would also say that when we talked about how to best invest the P P R T money at the last finance committee meeting, we thought that this was the number one item, the highest priority to invest. And quite frankly, I thought it was going to come in higher.
I was gonna say, it seems like a good deal.
Yeah. Yeah, I thought it was going to come in higher than eighteen. I I also acknowledge that there are, you know, the the proposal is not perfect, but I don't want perfect to be the enemy of moving ahead. I think it's good enough. And, you know, if they had simply written, you know, I have lots of pencils and comments I had given to Renee earlier, if they had just written under, you know, this page one, a series of group investigation and options are envisioned to include, but not limited to, and not necessarily including everything that we've said. I'm going to save me a little bit of, like, what? I I also think that, you know, in in my opinion, I want to make sure we've got a robust master facility plan that has longevity, more so than we have, you know, ideation sessions with twenty five percent of the population. You know, I think that my own biases, I want, I want the nuts and bolts, and I want the numbers to be available, and I want it to be thorough so that anybody can pick it up five, ten years from now and go like, okay, what's in the checklist? What do we need to put in the budget?
I had some questions, though, about the plan. I, I thought the tier one, I really understood what they were talking about, and I think it's really important for us to have a good plan moving forward. But I was a little, I just had a few questions about what we've done in the past with Engberg Anderson did a plan for the children's department not too long ago, right? Is that the plan that we were fundraising for when I first came on the board three years ago?
Yes, yes.
The rendering progress. So it was done at the same time as
So, so it was a first floor front desk relocation, among probably a couple of other things for the first floor. And the youth services where like the elevator, the old, what is it called? Dump waiter, thank you. Like bellboy, nope. Was going to be converted to be like a little reading nook or something. So that is.
Part of that, that would be part of this new plan that we're, or no, that's that old plan that's being thrown out.
So in my, I don't remember if I put this in the email, and if I didn't, that's my oversight. I would, I know I put this to staff. Present, like, this plan is as if nothing in the past happened. Because this is a, even though there's this rendering, the design of what will come in the master plan takes new information from the reports about the accessibility. It takes new information from the MEAP report that I I think the priorities of what will be in this master plan are vastly different than what was planned for this. I also think the people involved and the priorities of the library have shifted greatly. But I don't want to take up more time. You had other questions.
Well, I did have, yeah, I, I mean, I had a few just concerns because that wasn't that long ago that we were going and meeting with the public about the old renderings that we were doing and having tours and talking about our needs. And so I feel a little hesitation about our timing starting this now because that wasn't that long ago. And I do feel like some of the feedback that Melissa got when she went out with the public is people were not interested in expanding the library. They weren't interested in updating the spaces and we've, I feel like a theme that we've had at the board meetings recently is that we're having some staffing issues, we're having some financial concerns. And so the part that I had a hesitation with was like the tier two and the tier three. And so one of my questions was, do we have to move forward with all? I understand that we're also looking for the future for the library, but do we have to move forward with all this right now when we haven't had much feedback from the public? And we haven't even really finished our pilot program with all hours, and I feel like people are still like, why are we cutting? People don't fully understand why we're cutting back hours. So I, I, and I think the library is doing a great job of communicating, like, communicating this, but I still feel like there's some work that we need to do before we start talking about expanding spaces and adding more. So those were some of the hesitations I had. I didn't know what you're like, could we add on tier two and tier three? I, you know, a little bit down the road or so those were just some of the things I was thinking because we just kind of did something similar to this not too long ago. So I don't think the master plan, the tier one, we was included in it. I'm not sure.
I I think, I think the renderings that they did were primarily cosmetic. I don't think they took into account things like the fact that there's not an A D A accessible bathroom or.
They didn't.
Right.
Not, yeah, they didn't.
I, but I, at this, I I also think you bring up a a very valid point, Jenny, about the like dissonance, if you will.
My thing about is just really timing. I feel like this is a great. I feel like this is something great that we could move forward with. I just feel like we have to kind of have public buy-in to some of this to kind of explain why we're going to invest, you know, nineteen thousand dollars in the, you know, in this plan, which I think is great, but I just want to make sure that the community feels like, oh, I I feel like I'm a part of this and I understand where we're going with our plan. So that was just something that came to me as I was looking at this. But but I think Engberg Anderson is like a great fit for the project. They know the building well, and and I thought it was well thought out.
So can I ask a follow-up?
Yeah.
So from your thoughts, the public perception of us even doing a plan that includes any level of discussion for tier two and tier three, the optics would be bad.
From my point of view, I don't think it, I don't think it's a, yes, I don't think it's a great move for us.
I was trying to, trying to consolidate that into a little nugget. Thank you.
Is there a place, I think, maybe on the communication side of this, to marry it with the long-range planning happening? To say like, I I totally understand what you're describing, to say like, the alternative would be them to pursue a tier two, tier three report, like after the long-range plan, which couldn't make the cost greater than nineteen thousand dollars, right? Like a second proposal. That would be more money all in to get that at a later date, but trying to marry it with like these, how it's delivered to the public too, like in the scheme of a long-range plan for sustainability and greater service in consideration of the pilot hour feedback, like all the things that are going into these like phase two, phase three portions of the long-range planning process, that this has a role in it. The alternative is obviously not including it, but incurring potentially added costs on the backend of this.
Yeah, I hear what you're saying. I I'm also thinking that the tier one projects are so substantial that it would almost, it would be remiss of us to just do that and not think about other space needs or other opportunities to renovate other parts of the building, not just those that are out of compliance. So.
Can I give an example? You may find as a board that as you are getting tier one numbers in from Engberg, that the HVAC update to the building requires a significant amount of construction to accommodate a new system. And that might require moving of spaces. It might require replacement of con- of shelving. None of this even includes the environmental report that is required ahead of this, which includes asbestos and lead paint testing, which I need to, I've already had one person in the building today do a walkthrough to give me a quote for that. That's a whole other thing that has to be done before this. So my, the way, the reason I give that example is you may find that in staying with just tier one, other things are going to have to change anyway. I don't know what, because I don't know what we would buy for with tier one, but even just the HVAC and the actual effectiveness of it in the building and the three small ones for the museum, I've been told by Midwest Mechanical, that's not an effective way of managing those spaces. So I just wanted to give like an actual real example to where it might impact for future or additional construction needed.
And also making like the informed decisions around tier one, that if there was a tier two in five years or tier three in ten years, that wouldn't be then knocking that whole thing out, right? Like putting a new HVAC in here then in five years to like, oh, actually, we're going to reclaim this, but you know, like that, that piece too.
And I don't know if tier is the right word.
Yeah, well, my, my take, you, you, they've broken down the vision to part one through part five, and they started off with tier one to the third. So what part could be, you know, what, what is tier one in part one through six? As as opposed to, you know, maybe the, you know, the renderings and things like that come out of maybe the, you know, the latter part of putting this together. So that may be some of this in that. What's, the deliverables are obviously part one through part six. The tier twos could be anything. I mean, one of them is to do something for the museum. I mean, that could be.
Right. Sharing what tier two, as it's listed now, is defined by what you want for tier two to be, and the goal is just to get three numbers. The goal of this master plan is to get three numbers that you as a board can act on and decide, okay, where do we have village support? It's not like, like phase one, phase two, phase three. So definitely. So definitely not a, don't use the word phase. I'm just trying to think of ways to explain it differently. You would literally be picking an option for, after this plan is done to move forward with. And but we don't know what to do until we get those options for the numbers for you all.
We also talked about that informing to like with Jamie, like what that means for decisions to forward around referendum and districting and things like that. Um, I think it is valuable though, to Jenny's point, like the, the stuff that they did is that and you said it's like nothing is being considered, but like, are there renderings that still by, is there a, like the youth services and they enlisted in, I forget whatever tier like that would reference that.
Yeah, so, so like tier two, item C, move private service points is a reflection of conversations Engberg Anderson has had with this board previously. Not the exact makeup of this board, but this board, improve the children's library. That's a reflection of conversations that they've had before. So again, this was included but not limited to, um. Uh, I, I think that there may be a, an option where you know, the, the building needs an influx, the building needs an influx and I, I think there is a, gonna be a group of taxpayers who feel like, well, if the building needs an influx, why don't we also make it like better from a experience for the visitor standpoint too. Let's just not do plumbing and masonry. You know, cause, cause that's gonna be X and plumbing and masonry and some up, other again, um, cosmetic upgrades, user, upgrades for the user, um, for the visitor, for the patron are gonna be Y. I think that's actually gonna be more, I think people, more people will be receptive to that option than just well, fix the roof and fix electricity and fix the plumbing.
And I'll tell you right now, the foundation only wants to support things that are more cosmetic. They do not want to support capital improvements such as the HVAC. Not to say that that's our only funding option, it's not. But the idea of an improvement costing X amount of dollars, what is the benefit to the taxpayer? Yes, we can show them a million reports that were out of compliance. Maybe that we need asbestos abatement, maybe we need this, that and the other thing, but what would be, oh, sorry, I thought it was off, um. Uh, what would be the reason for them to support it? What's in it for them? And I think with part of the first presentation, my understanding and Eliza, correct me if I'm wrong, they didn't have all of these construction reports underneath it. It was really almost like a facelift.
That's exactly what I was saying. The way that we're approaching this now comes from the needs of the building as opposed to before we were trying to update the space, um, and bring it into the twenty-first century in a way that was more aesthetically um, based as opposed to like the, this is coming from what this library needs from building standpoint, from an ADA standpoint.
Well, thank you.
And I think it did incorporate things like safety in terms of staff, um, having more visual accessibility to the public. But we maybe didn't explain that particularly well in twenty nineteen as part of our communications.
Because the truth is, is we need the support from the community. We need the support from the village. Bill, what were you gonna say?
No, I was just, I mean, a lot of those is aligned with the whole, the facelift, you know, you do something like you did or you come up with a great plan for the children's area and then you find out with the HVAC people coming in, they gotta tear through there. Um, and now, okay, well ideally you need to put this unit here and it could change the whole configuration. And then you're gonna look at how best you sort of, sort of needs it, we can stay these sort of the outside of these four walls. Um, so at the end of the day, we, I, I, I feel from this, we're gonna get a more complete look at what is feasible based on the fact that, you know, you, you know, you're not just gonna put a lick of paint on here and you're, you're gonna update sort of all our discrepancies in the building. We, we want to sort of look at this in a complete project. Um, and it, you know, we, we do the HVAC, the HVAC could be, it could be huge as you know, like I said, take, take things down that you've already sort of built on. And so it could look completely different, uh, and then, then you start looking at what makes sense to, to do with some of the technology and and things on that nature. Um, so I, 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 cause at, at the end of the day, we're gonna see a big plan. I mean, anything that they put in for tier two and tier three are gonna be the change.
You get to decide what those things are. Yeah.
Yeah, they're not, it's, it's not fixed and, and I see, I, I understand where Jenny's coming from there. You want from the section, you don't want to sort of, oh, we tried this and then let's, let's do something different and go ahead and gain. I think this time around, we're looking at more of a complete project for the whole building as opposed to isolating, as you said, more of the isolated part of things and maybe not looking at the, the, the big picture.
Did Matt have something to say? I'm sorry, I just wanna.
I mean, I do, but nothing to.
Oh, jump in. Yeah.
Yeah. Well, we don't have a strategic facility plan, right?
No, this is nothing. We don't have any.
So I, I, I think it's incumbent on us to have a five or ten-year view. And given that there are collateral impacts that some of these things could have, like the HVAC system, it's, it's prudent to look and say, okay, what's the art of the possible? We can, we, we could tell them we're not interested in any of if they come back with their tier two or tier three. But I mean, the staff workroom's a joke. The public service points, I mean, just putting it so that you see the public service when you're coming from joy like this, you know, it has is fantastic. We know the children's library needs these work. We know the museum is a wild card. We know the technology in these works. So it, it seems to me like a lot of these are uh, elements that we already are contemplating. So to have that in one comprehensive plan, not that we need to take it to the public, and I think maybe that's the messaging around that is we have these huge capital needs that are also potentially going to impact other areas of the library. Therefore, we wanted to get a comprehensive plan.
I mean, one, one option I, I, I haven't heard specifically, but maybe worth discussing is do we strike tier three? Do we wanna say we're not gonna consider building expansion? You know, the population of Lake Bluff has not really changed dramatically.
It's actually not reducing based on our grammar.
Um, I, you know, that, that could make A, the, reduce the cost and B, help address some of the dissonance around.
Yeah, that's it.
Around the, the community comments right now.
Well, the other, I mean, the other thing I, I feel like to, this is interesting to hear Jenny being new on the board, um, that folks were like not interested in expanding, like that community feedback. It would be interesting to be able to go through this process and present. These are three tiers. And if there's truly no interest in that tier three, we're striking it, we're not pursuing it, but we have evaluated it with a full understanding. And then there's the flip side is that come twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, we had a huge influx of a different demographic that moved to Lake Bluff too. And does that shift what folks think about expanding? Like, I, I have no idea. I can't predict it despite being a part of that.
And in, and in some ways having a number that is inclusive of expansion helps give you the goalpost of, okay, we're gonna keep doing Band-Aids or the build, we have like a, it's like, it's like new, not that it is, but, but it's bigger and it's like new. It's, that wouldn't be a bad thing to have to communicate A, B, and C.
Yeah, well, I, I don't think the plan gave us any specifics really on like, how is community inputs? You know, how much in community input are we getting? I just wanna make sure that this report reflects the communities' wants and needs as well as like what we see as the board and is what staff sees in the library. Because I'm not sure that the last time we did this plan, community input was really taken because by the time they saw it, they were like, no, I don't want this.
Yeah, and that's the opposite of what this, that's the opposite of this methodology.
Yeah, like this is part one, public sessions for broad participation. Museum, staff, board.
My understanding is that the planning wasn't even considering public. It was only considering board and staff and foundation interest. And then I think a process like that, you're really shoot, shooting yourself in the foot because you need the support from day one. And that's why so much of my strategy with communication has been our HVAC broke, we had a gas leak, we needed a new furnace. Your letter, which we'll talk about, which went live yesterday, is getting really good awareness. The board retreat summary next week is gonna be telling people, oh, hey, we only have like twenty-nine percent of our fund balance at our lowest year or our lowest month, like you can't plan for unexpected things with that. Like, so we're slowly building the awareness of our needs as time goes on. And as soon as this starts, it's like, hey, we wanna hear from you.
Yeah, I mean, I guess that's just what I wanna make sure is that, because public and museum support is, we can't do anything without those two things. So like how, how are we gonna make sure that that's central to this plan and do it differently than we did it last?
And, and the museum themselves are so networked and so, uh, effective at fundraising. It's crazy.
Yeah. Yeah, I'll add though that, um, our village president Regis wants us to see, wants us to have a plan.
Yeah.
So I mean, we've already heard from him here and in other avenues that the library needs to have a plan that is short and long-term. And so even in saying that, there is support that we know that whether the dollar, whether he supports the actual dollar amount is different, but just having the plan so that we're not running into a situation where, um, we're caught unawares.
Oh, we should have had one years ago.
And yes, yes, this is maybe thirty years too late.
It does, I mean, it is unfortunate. We, we could go back in time and say, well, we'll scrap the cosmetic planned rendering, you know, money that was spent there. That would be great.
I mean, it probably is unfortunate in our history because now anything that we do going forward, people are gonna remember that. It's not so long ago. It's like, oh, well, you just did this. Well, I think that.
Regis, Regis was in one of the, yeah.
But I think that makes it even more apparent why the strategy around communication needs to be entirely different.
He said, it didn't, it, it didn't talk about the, or did they talk about the needs of the building? Like, well, you didn't know. Well, they, I mean, there were, I mean, they did show that there needed to be improvements, but that was not, I think, the focus of it. It was, it was much more cosmetic and making it uh, an updated children's space that was, looks more interesting. I'm sorry, like it had like different features, you know, they, they were getting rid of the desk, putting trees in was, so.
But if we can say, we need a new children's desk because it is not ADA compliant, that is a totally different messaging.
Well, and like what the message that you were talking about too, that about looking forward and so that the improvements that we're making now help to ensure the future of the building is a different message than you know, uh, making things look different. So I think if we're talking about like cost savings in the long run, that's something that the community is interested in more than some of the other things that maybe have been discussed.
And maybe something to consider if we have this documented is like who, if we have a list of the names of people from the community who participated in that process, whether it was just seeing the presentation, like reaching out to them in advance of announcing what, or in, in saying like, hey, listen, this is I know you were a part of this, here's where we stand, like telling that narrative to get that engagement and clarify misconceptions, because if you told me, I would have no idea. I was seventeen hundred miles away when that happened. So I was like, okay, great. But if we know those people, maybe it's worth engaging with them before kind of the all call to the public.
That's a great idea. Yeah.
That's its own focus group, in my opinion, you know.
I, another thing I would say is, I think knowing what we know today about the building, I think our entire funding strategy has also changed. Because five years ago, it was all about private donations to fund any cosmetic renovations. Now we're thinking differently about that too, so.
You're a great point, Jenny.
And I think, you know, Renee, um, again, this, this letter that I wrote to the community.
I love the post on Instagram.
Thank you. Um, Renee did a really good job in weaving in comments about the grants that we're pursuing because we also know that that is often one of the first things the community says is, okay, what grants are you pursuing? How are you trying to diversify, right, your revenue? So. Yeah. The, just again, the, my point being, I think our, our thinking around the financing of building improvements has also dramatically changed.
This, uh, similar strategic plan projects, are these just an inventory or are these ones that are temporary?
They've done those, yes. And it's a pretty expansive list. It's longer than this and the libraries on here are pretty great. I lived in Wisconsin for more than four years and Waukesha Public Library is a great library. Uh, my first library was Indian Trails. Jamie has a lot of experience working with Indian Trails and their financing. I mean, it's all coming together, um. Yeah, these are, this is a solid, um, resume.
Any other questions about this proposal for a master plan? Open to any motions regarding approving the, the spending for the master plan? Maybe I'm rushing things. Are we?
Is there more discussion?
Yeah, is there any more discussion? You know, I had, I had thrown out there, maybe, you know, maybe we don't look at option three. And then I talked myself out of it.
Does it materially impact the cost though?
I, I.
That's the thing.
I don't actually know if it would, um, because then more focus and attention would be on one and two. Um, that would be a question I could follow up with depending on what happens in this meeting tonight.
Then we talked about, um, if, what, if we need to know that information.
Yeah, I think the question's still on the table.
Bill brought up, like if something, we deal with something and then we need to have that information that we would have had for tier three.
I will say, kind of to what you were saying, um, there is something to be said for offering a really expensive option. That's like, clearly, we're not gonna do this.
The door in the face, I thought.
Yes, yes. And so, but we won't know what that number is until we identify it. Um, so we can say to the public, we figured this out. This isn't feasible. That's not our priority. We're not gonna do that. I think that is another decision among the board that you could decide tonight.
Well, I would just like to say, I would just like to know more. I'm, I'm fine with this voting. I would like to know more though and like have them be more specific. And maybe that's what we do is moving forward, like how we are going to like weave community input in and have much more of it than we did the last quarter.
Yeah, I would also say, I emailed him and he was on vacation. Um, and then I said, I need this proposal by the board meeting and he had maybe three days to put it together. So, um, community engagement is so integral to this library. And you both are on the community engagement committee with me, and I know we all know that the support of the community is vital for anything moving forward. So yes, I, I, I would, I would be very confident in my wanting to direct this program, this proposal with a very high emphasis on community engagement. And we have the benefit of the long-range plan happening, potentially happening at the same time, which is a beautiful alignment.
Yeah, yeah. No, I think it's really necessary for the future of the library and I think it's a great, this is a great place to go. So, but that would be, I just wanna make sure. So thank you for addressing.
Oh, and yes, and so this, this development of the master plan will be part of your community engagement. Committee meetings, it'll be part of building and ground committee meetings. We may have to bring the two together.
Long-range plan, I mean, it's, it, there are opportunities for the whole board to discuss. And then there are portions of this that will siphon off into community work.
It, it looks like part three is the one area that, that maybe we would maybe need expansions because that's the one that talks about the concept diagram and evaluations. So would they? I mean, because after that, then it comes modeling and implementation strategies. And it sounds like part four, five and six are gonna be based on what number three is gonna be. So number part three is the one that we wanna get probably a lot more of the community feedback before we move to parts four, five.
Oh, yeah, that's not, not tiers, but parts.
Yeah, because that's how they've broken their plans. Yeah, cuz that's how they've broken their plans.
But part one has public sessions is deemed appropriate by the library.
So he's been, they're gonna do part, each part is gonna have some sort of community involved, based on how we start first.
Yeah, I'm gonna start with part one. Yeah, on page two, under part one programming, the first thing is public sessions. Deemed appropriate by the library, meaning we can scope the level of these.
So then if the programming part then has a community involvement, then.
It's gonna inform everything else. I think about Regis saying, oh, wouldn't it be great if you had, you know, study rooms? I mean, that's, that is going to influence everything else. You know, whatever feedback is given by the board, by the staff, by the public, different groups of the public. That will then blossom out into the options. And having been a part of this process multiple times, you need that in the beginning. Cuz you can't change things that later on in the process.
So Renee, I have an ask. I would like Sean, no matter what we vote today. But I would like Sean to come back with a one-page project plan that shows me part one, two, three, four, five. How long they take, where are the interdependencies? Because it's, I don't know that they're necessarily in series. I think there's some things that are happening at the same time.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, and I, I think that might help, that would be helpful.
My understanding is, so I have a call scheduled with him tomorrow based on however this meeting happens. So he and I are already gonna meet. The project plan is the first thing that is developed. There's a timeline created, there are um sections determining who's ever, who, what roles everybody plays. So um I would just ask back, is that something you would want before a vote? I mean, I, I guarantee you that that is part of this project, even if it doesn't say that deliberately. That's my expectation to that. And having worked with other architects, that's integrated into what they do.
One last thing, with the programming at two grand and their rates, where you can go from one fifty to one sixty-five. That's telling me that they're gonna put, they're, they're gonna be involved somewhere between fifteen and sixteen hours. And that's gonna set the whole thing for this whole project. I would think that we'd have more time than, than that to get the community.
We can, we can offshoot, like, my thought is, well, everything he said, this is an estimate, right? We're not, we're not held to exactly this, it's to not exceed overall costs. But there also is a potential where if it does, if the board approves for it to go more. We also could decide, the community engagement consultant can lead more um focus groups, so that Angberg doesn't have to do it. So we're not paying architectural fees and salaries, we're actually paying our engagement consultant to do it.
Okay, I, I, I understand. So the engagement consultant is gonna be doing more of that, that, and, and both not gonna be involved in. But they're not gonna be the, the principal ones.
Cuz there will be sessions on just the building. There will be sessions on just the building. That's what you would want as a board member. Not to ask just generally about the library. Sure, you're, we're gonna find out generally about the library building from all of the sessions. From all of the surveys, you're gonna hear about the building, I would imagine, throughout the community engagement with a long, long-range plan. But this is community engagement just focused on the building. And also, we can tell him, we don't need a million boards, you know, three foot by five foot. You know, we can scope the deliverables when it comes to the actual presentations ourselves. That's why it says we estimate the cost not to exceed. It's very possible we can scope it finely to be less.
How many times have you done this for me?
Okay, so Glen Allen, I was front and center for the youth services remodel. Um and that was with uh Shales McNutt, who is actually the construction project um manager that Angberg works with. So when we get to that conversation, I have my experience with them. Um at Dakota County Library, I was involved in four separate building remodels. There have been smaller building projects at Clenco, but not with like, not with this. I was also involved at Deerfield too. When um my boss was on maternity leave. I was in some of those remodeling meetings for the new library in Deerfield that went live in two thousand. Or, I don't remember the year, but like I, I helped um design the children's room.
Amazing, sounds like it would be big for you to.
Yes, so, so I think that's another reason why I really appreciate Bonnie thinking ahead to the planning of the RFP for the strategic plan. This is a lot of staff time, but it is worth it and necessary. I'll, I'll ask Sean for the one pager.
Thank you.
See how fast you can turn it around. I just didn't know if you meant for like tonight or the later.
Hearing no further questions or discussion. Open to motion to. A motion on the Enberg Anderson proposal for a master plan.
What's on the table moving forward with the master plan and subject to?
Correct, it could be, it, it could be, you know, occasionally we've had, we've have approved. I don't know, like, I think the copier purchase and it was like, and we want you to try to negotiate this, that, and the other thing, right? Um so that Renee can move ahead. Uh so it could be just, we approve the proposal as is. It could be a modification of um scope or dollar amount.
I don't know if I have a good handle on where, which direction we are leaning on that.
Okay.
Personally, I mean, I was about to just like move to approve it. Ten minutes ago, so I actually wanted to say that, but I do, I don't know.
What you could do. What's that?
I'm to prove that that we spend eighteen thousand five hundred on, on a master plan. And if there are some couple of like the one pager that um expands on, on his. Parts one through six.
Yeah, we can say we have, uh, tell me if we can do this. I think this might be the path forward. We approve spending up to eighteen thousand five hundred dollars tonight with refinements to the proposal from Enberg Anderson. With things like a one-page or timeline on the project. Anything else that we want a little further clarification on, whether it's the community engagement piece of it? Or the um, you know, option three expansion piece of it.
It's actually the last page of the proposal, which is the contract. The reason I'm hesitating is because what you are approving tonight. In the board packet is the proposal. It's not just the money. So my, I'm hesitating to say, because the acceptance is, we ask that an individual authorized to bind the library to this agreement. Sign two copies of the agreement. This acceptance covers the scope of work defined by Enberg Anderson and an hourly not to exceed the amount. So it is not just the amount, it is the actual proposal is on the table. So if you wanna change that, you can, um or if you wanna defer to next month, you can. But that is, that is what the proposal is.
So even if we wanted to get a little bit more expansion then onto that.
We can still do, we could still get it. I mean, you could still move forward with approving, and then we would still get that information. And I'm extremely confident with all the hours that I've already spent working with them, that they will be able to deliver. Um their response was to turn this around as, or their request was to turn this around as fast as they could. So that it was ready for you tonight, um as per the direction. So um, yeah, I just will defer to your decisions.
So I, I'll make, let me see if I get this right. So I'll make a motion to approve um us moving forward with the. Uh proposal not to exceed eighteen thousand five hundred, um with the caveat that we'll get some. Uh a one-page summary um with some more detail of how it's gonna involve the. Community engagement portion of that. And timeline.
Yeah, but how long? So that was the first one that I heard from you all.
And don't ask me to repeat that.
And um before the second happens, just to say this would be a forecall.
Yep. Okay, thank you, Bill, for the motion. Is there a second? Thank you, Matt. Roll call vote.
Okay, trustee Shaw.
Aye.
Trustee Graziana.
Aye.
Trustee Jerdean.
So I'm trustee Zoudy.
Aye.
Trustee Hayes.
Aye.
Trust Freeman.
Aye.
Congratulations.
No, I think we will answer the, the same sort of.
Yeah, good job. Thank you, Jamie.
Well, and this is such a huge move forward for this library. The leadership you have just demonstrated is um fantastic. And unfortunately, uh missed these past decades, but it is a new direction with this board. And I'm really excited about this work. I love library remodel and construction work. Like, I don't know if you could tell, I know it's laughable, but like all the, all the stuff. I, I, I really love it, all the stuff that we've already done together with Enberg Anderson. Um so I'm really excited to be able to move forward with some numbers for you.
Sooner we can move forward with some of this, then we can move forward with engagement, like.
What you can't have one without the other, so I really appreciate the conversation tonight.
All right, that brings us to new business B. I'm also just wanting to, it's five after nine or so. We've been here for two hours and I just wanted to um, no, ask Renee, is there anything that we could wait till next year? Or next year, next month? Or do you guys wanna power through?
I mean, the policy is the quickest policy.
Yes.
Um and I, the next two things with CBI, one is absolutely necessary for the security cameras. So I think that would be a quick, but um, yeah, it's totally up to you.
You go when you need to go. All right, we're gonna power through then, I'm here. Okay. Um, uh, the proposed policy update.
Great, the governance and organizational structure policy was out of date. We updated the hours to reflect the pilot hours after January first, twenty twenty-four. So the first section set as of January first, twenty twenty-four, with the new hours. The second is that we are combining upon request the finance and technology committees. And then we made some minor adjustments to things like that were redundant.
Incorrect.
Correct, yeah.
Nothing was added, so the conversation I have with the engagement committee, thank you, Bonnie. Um that they are going to be looking at the governance policy for additions to clarify the scope of the director's role. That can happen at a later date. These were just changing incorrect.
Information.
Information.
And combining.
Thanks, thank you for that cleanup and the uh consolidation of the committee. Yeah. Uh is there a motion?
I'll push you to approve the governance and organizational structure policy revisions as.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Uh all those in favor?
I oppose.
Nay, abstain, no, we're good, thank you.
Before Jenny leaves, I just wanna acknowledge, um I invite all of you to this year's Read Between the Ravines event. You um have a free book, um which is our chosen book for the year. It's called Group: How One Therapist and a Circle of Strangers Saved My Life. She's a Chicago author. I'm very excited about this program. Um and you also have a flyer, all of our Read Between the Ravines programming. Um I hope to see you there. It's gonna be a great program, so enjoy your book. And your um, your eclipse glasses. Thank you so much.
All right, we've got some computer stuff to take action on.
So the first one is um our L A M contract. CBI is our IT and technology um services. We have a contract with them every two years. Their contract is based on how much equipment we have in the library. So there is a slight increase this time because we added five laptops to our list of equipment and devices. To support staff for work from home. Um that said, if we get this T-Mobile grant. We will be reducing the amount of workstations and actually those staff who currently have both a laptop and a workstation. Will be bringing it back down to that lower level um of equipment numbers. And so this is a, our standard contract. I've already talked to Roxy at CBI, who's our representative. Martha has already reviewed it. There's nothing changed dramatically um in years past. Um and just like I said, the increase is based on our increase in um property, equipment, technology, equipment. Please.
Going back to the governance.
Yes.
Missing Friday hours.
Yes, yes. We can amend the motion to include. I will change. Thank you. Again, eagle eye.
It's a Friday ten to five also, great. Fridays and Saturdays, ten to five.
Thank you.
Motion to approve the governance and organizational structure policies as amended to include Friday hours.
I will second again.
All those in favor? Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
Um what is the cost of the CBI land management?
So that's on the um.
Thank you.
This is a two-year contract?
Correct.
Okay, so it's four thousand a quarter and then forty-eight hundred a quarter, so a total of sixteen-three. It's at the top of that page.
I mean, you can see right here, this is an inventory of all of our technology.
How much of a difference would you say it is from what our contract is?
It's um about like a thousand, maybe a couple hundred because of the additional five notebooks that were the five. Um that incorporates, what did Martha tell me? Can I check my email? Is that okay? Um let me double check, I don't remember off the top of my head, but I know Roxy explained it. Thank you for your patience. I got the email chain, I just have to.
Yeah, I only asked because it's true.
No, absolutely. I knew it at one point. Okay. Let me just read some of this. Since our contract price is based on installed inventory, the addition of five notebooks in two thousand twenty-three shows a total inventory increase of twenty-two percent. We propose spreading the increase out over two years. I am also showing pricing with the additional up dark web monitoring. A bit, a very valuable service that we recommend adding. The service monitors the dark web for compromises to any email that is part of your domain. We currently don't have any dark web monitoring F Y I. So um in addition, the service provides both training and phishing campaigns. That we do recommend be done at at least an annual schedule. We have not had any of those trainings here on staff. That was one of my first remarks to maybe Matt or something, someone else. I was like, we don't have any double authentication. We don't have any of that training. The service was set up um for the library several years, years ago, but canceled by your predecessor, your predecessor Eric. And so.
Double authentication or the.
Well, we don't have that, that would be.
What was canceled?
The dark web monitoring. Then let me read these other emails. Um let's see. So I opted to um opt out of the dark web monitoring. And so the cost increase is to. And so the cost increase is to spread the increase of the equipment over two years.
So because our count of equipment, you know, twenty percent, our rate's gone up twenty percent.
Yeah, that's how the um, and I didn't know that until this process is, that's how our pricing is determined, which makes sense because it's support. Yeah.
They can't take you down.
There are a lot of other tech security pieces that we need, like the cloud base. Backup first before this. Um, but. Thank you for giving me the time to review that.
Any other questions on the CBI land agreements? Hearing none. Is there a motion? Thank you, Matt. We're glad you're here today. Is there a second?
One second.
Thank you, Bill. Uh, this is money, so we'll do roll call.
Thank you very much. I will send it over to Roxy tomorrow.
New business, do you like Deborah?
So this next um, one is for appropriately right under the twenty-five thousand dollar threshold for RFP. Which was their request from me. Um, this is the first of what will be a couple of quotes for the upcoming security camera. Um, paging system, door alarm access project.
Which is actually grant number four.
Yes.
Renee is managing.
Ten thousand, is that the one that was awarded?
In two thousand nineteen.
Yeah, and had to be used. So that with this.
Yes, although I don't, I think I mentioned this maybe at the last board meeting, but maybe at the technology committee, I'm in the process of working with them to get an extension because. I, I mean, I just need one. Um, and so that's still in the works. Um, they said as long as the money is available for the next fiscal year, the question is, will it be or not based on the state? That's what I'm waiting to hear. Um, but it's waited this long. That's what they've told me. They were like, it's waited this long to be dispersed. It's likely that it would still be there, but. Um, so just a little background. This is the quote for the first part of the security cameras. This is. I asked Roxy of all the quotes, what's the first one that you need to approve? And she said this one. This is the um, the hardware. Um, and um, all of the um, electrical, um, all of our systems, the security camera, the door access, the alarm. They're all going to be integrated into the same, which is saving us a lot of money and frankly is really good for the user. Um, that it's going to be integrated. So this is a lot of tech language to say that this is all of the um. Hardware um, needed to essentially set us up for the infrastructure of creating. The security camera system, the alarm door access and um. I've had several meetings with them, including a more recent meeting where I literally had a map. Of both the exterior and the interior. We went through all levels of the library and we identified those locations. So the next. Finance and technology meeting, I'm gonna come with that location. We added more cameras from either my first meeting with them. So. So that's what this quote is in front of you.
So this is not the cameras themselves, but the system.
Correct. Yes. So um, the server itself, we needed um, several servers in order to hold the data for the security cameras and all of that. They're not large pieces of hardware. They're gonna be able to fit very nicely in our server room and our staff area that already exists. But this would be all of the um. The hardware for all of the systems.
So this is the, this is the backbone, but doesn't include any additional cameras or.
That's coming up in another one. I was able to approve one quote that was under ten thousand, so I, I just moved that along. Um, there are two more quotes that they separated for me. So that we could move this project along with CBI, which is another benefit of working with CBI to do this because they're already our I T management service. Um, so if they know how to use what they're presenting, I mean, they would be the ones to help us anyway.
Any other questions?
So eventually this will get reimbursed by the grant. We just need to pay for it first.
Is there a motion?
I will move to approve the CBI quote for the security server.
Okay, thank you, trustee Freedom. Is there a second? Thank you, trustee Jardine. And roll call.
Trustee Shaw.
I.
Thank you very much. So fifty percent is due for deposits while working for us to get our first P O out. Um, now that it is approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody. All right, Renee, bring us home.
Well, I think this summarizes very well with something Bonnie said when she and I were going over these numbers. It's a lot of the same trends that you've seen in month one, but just slight, slight increases based on door count. Um, because we've had more people in the building this month. Um, so same averages according, like comparing Mondays. Four to six, two-hour period to Tuesdays and Thursday evenings, six to nine. Um, that afternoon period is much more um, traffic heavy than our evenings continue to be. Um, as I mentioned, Saturdays continue to be very busy. Um, I've included both the January and February heat map. Just for your comparison visually. Um, so you can see exactly where those trends are. And I find it really uh, good to see continued use in the morning, especially at some of those orange numbers. Tuesday, Thursday mornings, just like January. We know people want the library open in the morning. Based on just usage of the building and they ask us for that too. Um, I mentioned last month uh, that you would see an increase in leave time taken by staff. And so you have, and so here it is. Um, it is. Yep, yep. And so out of the total amount of hours paid for February, which is the shortest month of the year. Um, it is almost a twenty percent amount of those being leave time. It, it really demonstrates how we have been strapped. Um, and so I will keep giving you these numbers uh, throughout the pilot.
I'm sorry, and I, maybe Matt already asked this question. I missed it. That is the emergency paid leave?
Yes, so emergency paid leave is um, given distributed through sick time.
Just one thing I kind of back picked up on the last one, the, the Friday hours then, um, missing all the visiting.
Not that I'm, not that they're missing, I'm just not.
You just didn't want to.
Highlighting them because you can see them on the um, but there isn't anything noteworthy that I felt, but thank you for noticing that.
Yeah, did we, was Friday, was the Friday operating hours affected by the pilot?
Yes, we closed at six prior to the pilot and closing at five allows for um, more staff to be in the building at those hours. Um, I was very happy that we only canceled one and that was due to um, staff illness. Um, and so we only canceled one program. Um, Martha added two hours of passports for the month of. February, although um, those hours will be decreased um, going forward. Um, so it was a small add, um, but I'm not uh, confident that we'll continue going forward. So we'll have to see. I've included really important um, feedback um, from staff and managers for your review. I'll just highlight one. Um, where is Eliza's? Oh, yes. On Monday, February nineteenth, on President's Day, the library was down six staff members. Due to unexpected and expected absences, we were still able to keep the building open and have all of our desks staffed. Which that's probably the most that I've experienced at this library. Um, six different staff members out um, on a holiday, no less with a lot of people in the library, families and kids. So. I wanted to highlight that and it, it shows me, it demonstrates to me that. The pilot is working in the ways that we want it to be. We haven't run into a situation where we've left any desk unstaffed. Um, I go on to explain more specifics about um, desk coverage. Um, but as you can see from the amount of leave comparable um, challenges getting coverage for staff. These are written comments um, shared in the month of February, either on social media. Um, in email through my director form. Um, or a separate email that I received um, or written in our comments. Um, so much of the same written comments that we saw last month with Sundays. And so forth. And I, I have been including the standards for Illinois Public Libraries in every report, just as a reference that we are offering more hours than is. Required according to state standards already. Yeah, this, uh, this chart right here.
Yeah, so we're at the low end of that scale.
Yeah, and we're on the low end of that stair, scale and we're already.
And the population's reducing.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that's my update that I have. Next month will be our halfway point in the pilot. Um, at that point, I will be sharing with you initial responses from the survey. As of yesterday, I remember counting um, on the counter, it said a hundred and twenty-eight responses. It's really interesting when we evaluate the data because some of this backs up what we see in usage patterns. And some of the survey data is in conflict with usage patterns. So I look forward to sharing that more with you. It's another piece of data to consider, people's interests and um, want of the library to be open, but. I think our approach with including all the data qualitative and quantitative is very thorough. That's all I have unless there are questions.
Okay, um, I'll just point out one other thing as you continue through the packet. The letter is here in your packet. It went up on social media and on Friday it'll be part of the Lake Buck letter. And um, yeah, I walked into the library to get something and the person from behind the desk said. I read your letter. It was really good. Thank you so much. So that was very nice.
All staff got a copy of your letter on Friday during staff meeting.
So no surprises. This is very much um. It's, it bears a lot of similarity to the letter that Renee wrote in the last newsletter that was sent out to everyone's home. Um, but does talk about our um, retreat a little bit. Um, and so again, planting seeds for more uh, intricate, let's say. Community engagement that we'll have as we prepare this master facilities plan or strategic plan, the financial plan, the long-range plan. So.
And it primes them for the next communication, which I think will be very interesting to hear what responses about the boards retreat summary are. Um, I'm very sad to say that we have hit another record in um, book banning attempts. And that is the last piece of correspondence that you have in your packet. Um, A L A came out with an update of their annual numbers. Um, we, this country unfortunately broke another record. And so as book ban challenges happen across the country, they continue to increase. It's an important topic for libraries. I wanted to make you all aware of it. Um. And I appreciate the support you all have for the library and for intellectual freedom and for access in the community.
Then uh, it takes us to any other business.
I just put a reminder. Your um, where are you? Your statement of economic interest is due May first. I know, right?
And yet I forgot what I said.
Um, so my lawyer gave me a statement.
You could share it with the board.
Mine's already in.
Sandy mentioned this to me and she was like, oh, should I share it with the board? It was legal advice she received personally, so I just said we could make space for her sharing that. I believe Ally has already submitted. I think Janie has submitted.
I submitted as well.
I don't, I don't get a notification from the village until like right before the deadline. And then they tell me who hasn't submitted, so I don't know exactly when you submit it, but um. I mean, May first is still way off. So that's why I have, I don't know yet who has and who hasn't.
So at the bottom of the second page of the statement of economic interest, handprint the following. Completed following guidance provided by the Illinois Media Support. He said that. His wife is on a number of boards and he said he should always look that. Yeah, completed following guidance provided by the Illinois Minister.
And this is just personal advice that you're sharing. I just want to state for the record, it's not necessarily from our lawyers, but.
No.
Yeah, thank you for sharing that.
One other quick thing, um. Last month, we approved a resolution supporting a Senate bill in Springfield to increase the RFP. Our Senator Julie Morrison has signed on as a co-sponsor as a result of our outreach.
That should be on social media.
I wanted to do a news post. I actually said to Bonnie, I want to do a news post talking about the resolution and saying. Who we've engaged at the state level on this. So, thank you.
Yeah, yeah. Additionally, I, I mean, there have been other engagements, but um, reached out to Sandy Car and she wrote a support letter for the.
T-Mobile.
T-Mobile brand, yeah.
Yeah, so did Drew. And yes, yes, he's showing up. He's showing up. What's that? No, 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 it's, I'm really happy of the support we are getting from the community. So, yeah, all thanks to your efforts.
All right, any executive session needed? Hey, motion, is there a motion to adjourn?
Also a motion.
Uh, nine thirty, Zaudi and second. That was Bill? My hearing's not great on this side. Um, all those in favor? That I heard. Opposed? All right. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.